Welcome to the News Tribune's Forum for Candidates Seeking Seats on the Blair Oaks School Board on the April 5th ballot. I'm Gary Castor, Managing Editor of the Jefferson City News Tribune, and I'll serve as moderator of the forum. Four candidates are seeking two seats on the school board. Prior to the forum, the candidates were advised the rules of the forum. They were told they would be provided an opportunity for an opening statement, a round of questions, and then a closing statement. For each of these segments, they are given two minutes to speak. So let me introduce the candidates for today's forum. On my left is Valerie Fisher. She's a Senior Family Counselor at Millard Family Chapels. She and her family recently moved to Wardsville for the school district. Next to her is Glenn Reynolds. He's the owner of Central Missouri Power Wash. He's lived in Wardsville for eighteen years, and he and his wife have three sons, two of whom attend Blair Oaks. Next to him is Adam Meitzner. He's the owner of Echo Water Systems. He's lived in Wardsville for six years, and he and his wife have two children at Blair Oaks. And next to him is John Weber, a financial advisor who's seeking a fifth term on the school board. He and his wife have lived in Wardsville for sixteen years, and their three children have attended Blair Oaks. So, welcome.
Thank you.
So, before the forum, we cast lots to determine who would start first with our closing, with our opening statements, and so we're going to start with Adam.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, and thank you all for being here. It's a privilege to be with you all and doing this. Reason I'm running for school board is I started to go up to school board meetings in August of last year. I watched a lot of podcasts, and with the situations that were going on last summer with all the school boards and everything, I was called, I think, to start attending the meetings because I was interested in what was going on and wanted to get information about how the board works, how our budgets work, and stuff like that. And so then a person I listened to, General Flynn, he said, you know, if you want to get involved, school board would be a great place to start and get involved. And so after a few meetings, a lot of prayer, I decided it was a good thing for me to hop in the race and run for school board. It's just something that I feel like I've been called to do, and I want to give back to a community that's given a lot to our family. When we moved to Wardsville, my children were behind, coming from Jess City Public Schools. The staff, teachers, administrators went above and beyond to help my children with text messages, phone calls, free tutoring, staying after class. So the community has given a lot to us, and we want to give back. And so that's probably the main reason why I want to run is to give back to a community that has supported my family, and I think I feel like this is the best thing that I can do for that. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. John?
Thank you, Gary, as well, and ladies, and everybody here that's actually candidates for the board. I just want to say I appreciate you all wanting to run. I totally support anybody that wants to serve in a capacity that is helping their community. So again, I appreciate all three of you wanting to do that. This is my twelfth year on the board. I'm running again because I want to continue to be involved with what's going on with the school district. My wife, Chris, is a teacher of twenty-seven years, and twenty-six of those have been at Blair Oaks, and she'll retire from there eventually. Our youngest is in seventh grade, so I want to be involved to make sure not only he but the rest of students have a good opportunity to continue to be successful like we have been. So I just want to continue to be involved, and so that's why I'm, again, running. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Greg Russell. Greg is the one that actually is stepping down, so I'm the only incumbent that's still running for the board, and Greg actually was on the board for twenty-one years. So I just publicly want to thank him, and again, I appreciate this opportunity to hopefully communicate to the voters that, you know, I would love their support if they so choose to continue to give it to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Glenn Reynolds. As you said, I'm the owner of Central Missouri Power Wash, resident of the Wardsville area for eighteen years, and I too am going to say thank you, guys, all of you, for coming up here and compete to make it the best opportunity to get excellent people in on our school board. I'm excited about this opportunity because I too have a vested interest. I am going to be vested in Blair Oaks for at least the next fifteen years. I have a third grader, a kindergartner, and one that is in preschool currently. And so combining them with all of their friends that are in the area, I want to make sure that we continue the level of excellence that we've been getting from Blair Oaks since I've been in the area. Being a transplant, so to speak, I'm from the Atlanta, Georgia, area. Growing up, I lived in the same house my whole time I grew up, but I went to, I think it was, eight or nine different schools, just through transition of new schools, opening up and moving around. And so I've seen really not good schools, and I've seen really good schools and been able to participate. So I bring a very wide degree of perspective into this. I want my kids to be successful in life. I want all of our children in the community to be successful in life, and that's what I feel like our school systems are here for, is to prepare them for that next step beyond. And I want to make sure that I can do my part within the community to help promote that. Our community has been good to me, like I said, with our business. I've gotten a lot of support from that within our community. I'm extremely thankful for that, and I want to give back to where I can. One of the things that I've found is our community participation. We have great community participation in our schools through sports. I think there's other areas of opportunity that we can bring the community in to continue to make us all better. So with that, I say thank you.
Thank you. And Valerie?
Perfect. Well, Gary, Lane, and Anna, thank you so much, and gentlemen, for being on this adventure together. So for anyone to put their hat in the race for this, it takes a lot of commitment, and so I understand what they have involved already. And so my name is Valerie Fisher. I am married to my husband Devon for fifteen years, this past month. We have two children. We have Maxon is in seventh grade, and Hannah is in fifth grade. So it's very interesting. I am, yes, the newbie among the group, but the reason for that purpose is I was a 2001 graduate of Jess City High School. We sold our forever home in August, which is a big deal because I designed it, so it wasn't taken lightly. But we let our children decide, you know, where do you want to finish out your education? So after a lot of thought and prayer, we said, you know what, we're going to make this move, and we have never regretted it since. So am I driven? Absolutely. So since I am the new person, I definitely have a lot of passion and drive for me for this position. The biggest thing is, is I know I've been called to serve on this platform. The best way I can describe myself is I'm a Jesus-loving conservative mom, and I will seriously work endlessly for my kids and your kids. So there's a lot invested. When they get me as a representative of the community, it's not just, oh, I know who she is. They know all my beliefs, and I can definitely bring that to the table.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to start with our questions, so it'll be a rotational basis. So we're going to start with John. So, John, the seats you are seeking are nonpartisan, and you don't have to disclose your political affiliations as part of this whole process, but for your constituents, political affiliation may help them understand how you would govern, even at the school board level. So how would you describe your political leanings? What drives you behind your decisions?
Sure. Well, to speak very honest, I'm a registered Republican, but as I go into any type of election or actually any type of decision-making process, I want to actually look at both sides of the situation. I consider myself, what I would say, as a conservative individual, but very open-minded. I had somebody approach me yesterday that had questions about me running for the board, and one of the subjects came up, had to do with gender identity. And it would be naive not to be open-minded in the world that we live in because there's going to be things that are presented to us moving forward that I'm just not automatically going to make a decision based off of prior beliefs. I'm going to include that as part of the process, but I need to look at both sides of everything and be open-minded. So, and there's a lot of circumstances and situations that are going on now that are very public, are in the public domain, and ten years ago, those things weren't issues. And so I just feel that no matter, you know, my personal beliefs, even though it's part of my makeup and my decision process, I will always look at both sides of things. I will always look at, when it comes for representing the district, what is in the best interest of our students and the district as a whole.
All right. Thank you. Glenn?
So making, as I say, nonpartisan issue into a partisan issue, issue, just kidding. I am a registered Republican. I tend to lean towards the libertarian side of things, believe in typically a smaller government interaction. I believe in the individual choice and individual accountability is where I tend to fall. I will say I'm, for the most part, socially conservative and fiscally conservative. I also believe in truth, and there are things in this world that are hard-based facts that if we don't, if we don't have those, if we change things that are, to an extent, infallible, I don't feel that the basis, the rules of society can move forward. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but from the standpoint of, you know, take the gender identity, I tend to stand on the fact that there's two genders and that's it. And so I believe in that wholeheartedly. I don't know how to go forward from that. With that being said, outside of that, I tend to, I want to look at our district and our people that we would be representing, and also move forward with what would be best for the district, everyone as a whole within that district. I do have an open mind, and in talking about other issues that are on the national spotlight, I've reached out to some friends who share extremely different viewpoints than I typically do on things to come together. I believe most of these issues, what's presented in the media, is you have one side that presents this, one side that presents that, and you tend, the reality is somewhere in the middle in what those degrees of separation are. So, yes, I would look forward to representing our district well, but I'm a Republican and a conservative, too.
Okay. Thank you. Valerie?
So I am proudly a conservative, conservative Republican, always have been, and I think that's important because when people know that their vote, to me, is me acting as a representative, they know exactly what I stand for and my beliefs and my philosophy. So they know where, you know, my morals lie and how I would direct the future for our children. So there's no question on, oh, what would Valerie think about this? From the moment that, you know, I wake up to go to bed, I wholeheartedly believe that we, myself, has to and needs to portray a good example for not only my children, but my children's friends and who they go to school with. So there is no question, and what that does is that builds trust with the parents and among the school district. I know speaking with a lot of community members since running, putting my hat in for the election, a lot of them want to know, you know, what's going on, you know, who can I trust, what is, what's going on with our meetings? And they just, their biggest thing, one of the biggest things, is that they are crying out for transparency among the school board. Do I believe Blair Oaks is amazing and the greatest school district? Absolutely. That's why we moved here. Do I still believe that there are improvements to make? Definitely. We need to constantly improve and grow. We need to listen to the public at our school board meetings to know, okay, what's the feedback? What's working? What's not working? Because otherwise, we can't improve and succeed if we don't have an open ear to others. So I'm really looking forward to having more communications with the public so they can trust me, trust the school board overall, and continue to make improvements for greatness.
Thank you. Adam?
Thanks, Gary. I'm not shy about what I believe in. I'm a Blair Oaks first. I'll be putting our kids first. I'm a Christian conservative. I don't bend or break on my ideological, what I believe in. I've been very open about that to everyone I've spoken with. I believe Blair Oaks does a great job at doing the things that they do and the board doing the things that they do, but like Valerie said, I think there needs to be a lot more transparency. We had a parent come to a meeting last month, and the school board's emails not even on the main website. And so how are parents supposed to get ahold of a school board member if the email's not even on the website? I think there should be a loud conversation at meetings. I think there should be open dialogue about situations that are going on. On the transgender issue, I don't think boys deserve to be in a woman's bathroom, and I don't think a woman deserves to be in a man's bathroom, and if a man shows up in a woman's bathroom with my thirteen-year-old daughter, we're going to have a serious issue. And I'm not afraid to speak about that. I put faith first in all my decisions. We praise the family, me and my wife and my children, before we make any major decisions like we did when I was going to put my hat in for school board. I think we live in a pretty conservative community. We don't deal with a lot of the things that other districts deal with, as far as the CRT, the transgender issues, and a lot of opposing viewpoints. But I hope the district recognizes that I'm honest, I'm trustworthy, I'm upfront, and I'm not afraid to speak my mind on certain issues and how I believe in them.
Okay. Thank you. So Glenn, we'll go to the second question with you.
Fantastic.
What's the biggest issue facing Blair Oaks in the next year, and how would you face it?
The biggest issue facing Blair Oaks within the next year would be, my concern is the potential change of leadership. Whether Dr. Jones stays or goes, I don't know. He's moving up in his tenure, and I don't know if he's going to be moving along, but having that potential out there, I feel like we need to have the most quality individuals to direct who comes in and steers our school, our school system. The board sets policies, administration enforces them. I think Dr. Jones has done a fantastic job since he's been in school, our school, improving it from where it once was back in the late nineties to the early two thousands to where it is today. I want us to be able to continue to maintain, as I've said, that level of excellence for all of our kids, preparing them for that next step once they get out of the Blair Oaks School District. Having the appropriate administration in place is a key to that. I think that truly is the, one of the largest potentials that we could face on the school board.
Okay. Thank you. Valerie, same question.
I believe that as our district grows, I think the biggest thing is as we gain more students, we're going to need to retain and acquire new educators, whether that be, you know, as teachers, from the top to the bottom. There's going to be many different avenues that new staff is needed. And the reasons why we need to make sure that we get the best staffing, we need to become high incentive, high incentives for those teachers, for those custodian workers, for those teacher aides, for those substitutes. We expect the best from our children. We should expect the best from our school board. We should expect the best across the board, from the custodian to the cafeteria ladies to all teachers. So I think that we need to make sure that we have those staff coming in and want to come into our school district, well-prepared, well-equipped, be able to teach their job wholeheartedly, and know that they are fully supported by our administration. So I think that we definitely need to focus on, okay, how are we going to attract those great teachers into our district? Great teachers creates a great education, a great atmosphere, which creates great testing scores, and just improves the district as a whole. So the biggest thing is, you know, we need to equip our students with, yes, the best education, but we also need to make sure that their character is being built because we only have a small portion of time with our children. So K through senior year is a small time in their life where we can mold them, influence them, and have a great impact on them. So we need to have the best staff to help them along that process, become a better, successful person in life.
Thank you. Adam?
I'll agree with Glenn. I think Dr. Jones is at the end of his road. You know, Larry Lintecum's retiring this year. There's a number of other superintendents that are retiring. I know Jim, Dr. Jones, has put in all of his years, and he can walk away whenever he wants, but I don't think that's what he's going to do. I think he wants to see things through with the second stage of our construction on our new high school. I also agree with Valerie. We need to keep great educators. We already have great educators. We have some of the best test scores in all the state of Missouri with almost the lowest per-people cost for what we spend on our children. And so it gives value to, you know, the teachers, the administration, the staff. The parents are super-involved. The community is super-involved, and so that's great for Blair School District, being over the past ten or fifteen years, if not the lowest, one of the lowest costs per pupil. I'd like for those to stay low. I'd like for our taxes to stay low. We are about half, if not more than that, than the average cost on our taxes when it comes to the districts, and I want to see that continue. But I want to also have the best educators, the best teachers, the best staff, and I want Blair Oaks to be the best. I mean, I don't have any doubt about that, that we already are. I want to continue that. I want to continue on a balanced budget. The high school that we built came in right at budget or underneath, and so fiscally, I want to continue those things along with keeping our staff great, being able to give raises to our teachers and administration when we can, and bringing in other teachers since we are going to be hiring more educators over the next couple of years for the new high school. Thank you.
John?
Well, specifically, next year will actually be when we'll present a new bond issue to the public that actually has to do with phase two. So that'll be a big opportunity to communicate that to the public and the reasoning why we'll have to re-educate them, even though when we passed the first bond issue, it was explained that it was going to be a two approach to be able to complete what we needed to do for the new high school. So that'd be a big focus. There'll be a lot of time involved that we'll have to prepare and support Dr. Jones with his communications to the patrons of the district to be able to get that passed. The other thing is we're also starting early educational preschool that will start up next year. We've got great leadership pertaining to that that has to do with all the research behind it, and so I know that we're up and ready for that, to take on that challenge, but it will be a new opportunity. We'll have to have new staffing pertaining to it, and we feel like we're in a good place pertaining to that. We also, Dr. Walters, she is our middle school principal now, and she's going to be moving into the assistant superintendent role. So there's going to be opportunities there to make sure that we have her helping Dr. Jones in all the critical areas that he needs support. So those are kind of the main things that will be kind of at the forefront, but as everybody has said, we always have a constant opportunity to make sure that we have the best staff throughout the whole district, and we do have several individuals that are getting close to retirement, so that's always going to be a concern of those transitions and getting the right people to replace them.
All right. Thank you. So several of your answers segue into my next question. We'll start with Valerie. Do you believe teachers are sufficiently compensated at Blair Oaks? Explain your answer.
So I truly, wholeheartedly believe that the teachers are on the front line, so we expect a lot from them. Every time somebody has a new idea, whether it be from, you know, the board or a parent, ultimately, it gets placed upon the teacher to carry that out. So they are the ones who does most of the work in making sure our test scores are great and such like that. So are they ever going to be paid enough? I don't think so. I think that we need to do the best and make sure that they are well-taken care of. According to, like, the rest of the state of Missouri, yes, I believe we are above average on the base pay, but I really think that any staff member always wants to feel appreciated, not only some from, like, you did a great job and a pat on the back, but they like to have pay taken care of through incentives and bonuses. So I really think that we need to have an attractive incentive plan set up for educators so they can say, okay, well, here's my goal, here's how I'm going to get it, and if I get that goal, great, I get a bonus or an increase of pay added to their base salary. If we have great-paying teachers, they are happy, they're content, they feel well-taken care of, they feel supported by the district. Happy educators will then, for sure, make a happy classroom, a happy atmosphere, and it's just going to transcend to making a better student overall, academically and character-wise for the student. So I don't think we will ever feel like we're paying the teachers enough, but I think we definitely need to look at that because they're worth every penny.
Thank you. Adam?
Overall, to be honest with you, I think teachers make a lot less than what I feel that they deserve, but we run a budget, and so you got to stay on a budget. I believe the base salary for Missouri is thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I believe we exceed that for first-year teachers. But again, it would always be great to be able to give them more. They're educating our children. We want to bring in the best teachers. The thing at Blair Oaks that I notice, I think above anything else, I don't know if I'm stepping out of line, but I don't think a lot of our teachers are there based on the pay that they make. They could go to Jess City, make a lot more money than what they are at Blair Oaks, but they like the Blair Oaks School District. They like the way we do things. They like the way our administration does things, how our school board handles themselves. But yes, I believe teachers deserve a lot more than what they make, but we have to live within a budget. We're not the federal government. We can't keep on printing money just to be able to give teachers more money. But yeah, I want to be able to give teachers as much as we can, if the budget allows that. So that's how I feel about that.
Thank you. John?
Well, I have to be honest, I wish that we could pay them a lot more. They deserve a lot more. As a husband of a teacher and who is getting close to retirement, I wish that all of them got paid more. I think they're underpaid across this whole country. They're underappreciated from the aspect of all the things that they have to do, especially over the last couple of years with COVID, having to be prepared both in class and then also virtual. So they've taken on a lot of additional duties, and so the answer to it is, yes, I wish that we could pay them more, but as Adam alluded to, in our district, just the makeup of it, we have very little commercial base within our district, and so our tax dollars are limited based off of the structure of our district. And I believe that a lot of the teachers want to be in our district because of the makeup of it, the support that we have overall by the parents for educating their students, and then actually the involvement with the students and all the different activities that we have. There's just a special feeling of working in the district, but I wish we could pay them more. You know, we're always looking at opportunities that we can find dollars wherever we can to hopefully be able to give them raises, but there's a complete package that has to do with their compensation, so we also have to look at, you know, the health expense, the health plan that we provide, and all the additional ancillary products that they also have available to them. So I wish we could, but we have to stay within certain limits, but by all means, all of our teachers should be paid much more, so.
Thank you. Glenn?
I tend to agree with you guys. Our teachers do deserve much more. They take care of our, as a parent, our most valued treasure, our children. They take care of them, and they mold them, and as I've said, they help them to move on, to transition into a potentially successful. to transition into a potentially successful life. I would love to be able to pay them more as much as we can, and I would be open to many different conversations on how, how to potentially do that, whether that's through a performance type of pro- uh, type of program or what. And as you guys have said, I do recognize that we have a budget that we have to live within too, 'cause yeah, we can't be running into the red and maintain our school. So, um, creating long-term problems with short-term solutions. So I do believe our teachers should be paid more. I think a lo- as you've said, a lot of our teachers choose to be within our, uh, within our district because of the support they get. I think they choose to be within our district because of the community that we have built there within our district. I hope we continue to foster that, that sense of community and support for our teachers.
All right, thank you. Next question, we'll start with Adam. Beyond compensation, what should the district do to improve how it recruits and retains highly qualified teachers?
I believe as we, uh, thank Gary, um, as we talked about before, Valerie and Glenn and John, um, compensation should come along with, um, how they're doing in the classroom. Um, if a teacher's in, in the classroom and they're doing negatively, um, based on test scores or whatever else, um, I think we should be looking for other teachers to bring in, um, that can, can do those things and do them to the best of their ability. Um, I think it would be great if we could compensate them, um, based on goals, um, you know, throughout the year, uh, certain, uh, test scores, um, the way they're teaching in their classroom, um. I don't think we have a hard time retaining teachers at Blair Oaks. Again, teachers that are at Blair Oaks come to Blair Oaks because they wanna be there because of our community. Um, I don't think it's an issue that we're dealing with on how to retain teachers. Um, again, as John said, we have a bunch of teachers that are at the latter part of their, um, employment, so they'll be retiring. Um, I think as a whole, if you look at Blair Oaks and our community, I think it's really simple for people. Um, and to see our test scores, um, above average, you know, last year during COVID, um, majority, if not all, of the schools in Missouri were, uh, went down a percent or two, whereas Blair Oaks went up a percent and a half. Um, so it gives value to, um, not only the teachers, but the family involvement, um, what they went through, uh, with COVID, um, all the extra stuff that they had to do. Um, but I don't think it's an issue, um, on how to retain teachers at Blair Oaks. I think teachers wanna come to Blair Oaks because of what we stand for and what we believe.
Thank you. John, same question.
Um, and again, serving on the board for twelve years, I've obviously been involved with a lot of hires over that time period. Um, Dr. Jones has been able to move our district from almost being last when it comes to base pay to being within the top three. Um, I think the biggest thing that sells us, uh, to candidates that are interviewing for opportunities is the history of our district and where we started, where we've come to, and the excellence we've been able to do over the last twenty-plus years. And I have to give Dr. Jones a lot of this credit because he's had the foresight to focus on what needs to be done to improve, uh, the children's learning and their scores, to get accredited, and then also the complete atmosphere that we've created out of Blair Oaks, where you've got people moving in from other states that are actually, you know, looking at the community within Jeff City, sim- city limits and then outside, and where do we wanna be? And the majority of them are coming out to Blair Oaks. That's why we have continuous developers trying to actually buy additional land to build more homes. And so every interview that I've ever had, we always ask, you know, what do you know about Blair Oaks? And they always compare where they're coming from to Blair Oaks, and it's where they wanna be. So I think we have to continue that excellence of, um, you know, what we're doing in the classrooms, what we're trying to do for all of our students, the actual cooperation that we have within the community. Uh, continue to focus on making sure that we have a great benefit package that attracts people. Um, but I will tell you, the benefit part of it has never been a distraction. It's not been a reason why somebody has decided not, uh, to actually have employment with us, so.
All right. Glenn, same question.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, I think that we are doing an excellent job currently of maintaining that through the pay and the total benefit package. I think that's something that needs to be evaluated periodically to make sure that we stay at, uh, at or above the, uh, or above the average. As you said, our community that we have here and this, and the level of excellence that we expect and have developed here also plays into the individuals that come into Blair Oaks. We recruit a lot of people from our direct community also as teachers, I've noticed that. And some of the people that I, I have personal experience with, very excited to be coming on board with Blair Oaks. And, uh, I wanna maintain that, that excitement that we have, uh, from everyone who's involved with, with Blair Oaks, whether it's the beginning, the beginning teacher just starting out, one that's potentially transferring here, or the one that's going towards the end of the career, looking towards retirement. We need to be reevaluating all their pack, uh, the packages to make sure that they're, can stay competitive. But I think one of the key things is just the level of excellence, community involvement and excitement that we have built within the Blair Oaks system itself.
All right, thank you. Valerie?
Um, I'll reiterate, um, what the gentlemen are saying, where, um, I definitely agree. Dr. Jones has been a vital part of making Blair Oaks go from, you know, not so good numbers to amazing. Um, he created this timeline that I have at home, and just to kinda see the progression of, you know, we weren't doing very good compared to the rest of the state, and right now we're doing phenomenal. So that takes time, that takes a lot of commitment to figure out, okay, what do we need to fix? And then what do we need to adjust? So to see that play out, um, is a, a huge accomplishment. Um, I do agree also that the community is a attraction for teachers, um, to be a part of, just like us. We moved, uh, school districts to be a part of a great school district. So one of the other things, um, I would love to see happen is, you know, letting the teachers know that we support them, um, on their decisions, on their teachings. Um, and honestly, I would even go towards, um, looking at the teachers' responsibilities and figuring out what can we take off of their plate? I know we're like, oh, let's do this, let's do this, let's have all these new goals, which is great. But their ultimate job is to educate our children. And so how do we help that? You know, let's look at their responsibilities and see what we can take off their plate to make them have more time, more freedom to fully educate and put more of, um, their heart into their teaching. So, um, I'm definitely open to looking at how can we help them? Um, one of the other things that I want to say about, um, teachers is we need to hear their feedback. We need to know what is doing, um, well, and what do they need help with? And I highly encourage, um, the teachers to come out to the board meetings. And we sincerely need, um, a, um, public, um, open discussion, so where parents can voice what's going good, what's not going good. Uh, but the teachers need to do that, because we don't know what's going on unless the teachers tell us. And I also believe that the board members need to be inside of those school buildings, um, not to say, oh hey, what's going on? But so we fully know what they are teaching, um, so then the parents could trust us on, we know what's going on. Um, so lots of improvements.
Okay, thank you. John, we'll start with you on the next question. So all of you have talked about some of the things that, that Blair Oaks does well, okay? But give me an example of something the district should do better at.
Well, um, I think from the aspect of conversations that we've had, and obviously being on the board currently, um, there's a lot of discussions that we're having that has to do with more, uh, involvement within our board meetings, uh, with the public. Um, we're very open about that. We're actually having a lot of different conversations that has to do with potential changes that we do to the format of the board meetings. Um, there's a lot of different ways that the district can communicate, um, you know, back through, uh, Dr. Jones, that ultimately then gets communicated to the board. Uh, we do, uh, have talked about, um, changing the website to include, uh, our emails at least, to be able to be, uh, in contact. So I think one of the immediate things that, uh, you know, has been brought to light is what can we do differently that can have more involvement with the community that actually has to do with input, uh, pertaining to the district? Um, Valerie also mentioning about maybe actually having, uh, teachers' involvement. We do a lot of things throughout the year that actually has to do with teacher commun- or committees that communicate back to the board. So we do get a lot of feedback from them, but I think there's always opportunities to improve. Uh, I feel in our world that we live in, a lot of things that are breakdowns is because of lack of communication, and then I also think because of lack of knowledge. So I'm supportive of potentially these changes, uh, you know. Part of it comes into play, kind of like when we're wanting to try to give more money to our teachers and stay within a budget, we also have to remember what we're trying to accomplish in a board meeting. So we have to be understanding of, uh, making sure that we get things done, that we actually have to physically get done as well, so.
All right, thank you. Glenn?
Thank you. I have two things here, as we've both discussed, open communication, both in the board meeting throughout, throughout the proper channels and in the side of the board meeting. I think there's opportunities there for us to improve as a board to make sure that we have, to continue to have the community involvement that we need to make our commu- this successful. Um, the other thing that I have, uh, from one of the note, and things that I've noticed too, is, uh, our sports programs are fantastic, and I want to continue that because I think that pulls a lot of people in from the community. But I think there's other aspects of extracurricular activities that we can pull even more people from our community and if we get more involvement and put a little bit more emphasis on. Like take the Blair Oaks archery program. While a sport, it allows kids who aren't necessarily as, uh, athletically gifted as others to be able to come in and participate and enjoy something new. I think there's lots of other thing, other opportunities out there that more kids could participate. And when the kid, children participate, parents tend to get involved, and it just brings our community tighter and closer together. The debate, uh, debate system, FFA, some of the stuff we do have. But I think there's opportunities out there for us to reach out and bring in more support from our children and our community, so.
All right, thank you. Valerie?
Um, so our, my main thing is transparency. Um, my, throughout my whole different, um, careers, so one of, one of my, uh, greatest accomplishments is, um, as a registered nurse, I was a director of nursing. So, um, a hundred percent responsible for forty-five residents and twenty-five staff members, um, twenty-four seven job. Um, not only do I, um, have to create and nurture relationships with my forty-five residents and my twenty-five staff, but also the family members, and then they each have their own position. So taking that and knowing kind of what goes into a, a successful relationship, um, it's kind of just like the boardroom, where it takes time, it takes an open ear, um, and it takes that building into a hundred percent trust of a person. So as a nurse, people fully trust me with their lives. Um, working in the funeral industry now, they are trusting me at the greatest, um, moment in need of their life, their biggest grief moment. Um, and so one of my biggest strong suits is just being trustworthy. And so, um, and I did notice that they did put, uh, the email addresses up on the website recently, um, which is a great, um, improvement. Um, I, um, would like to go abo- above and beyond that, where when I had an office, it was my door is always an open door. Um, you come in, you talk to me, um, and we figure out what's going great, what's not going good, and then how do we improve it? So saying I always have an open door is, um, you know, I give out my cellphone number. Whenever all of our little Facebook posts that we do for campaigning, I give out my cellphone number, and I'm really grateful that, uh, community members have reached out to me. Because we need to be trustworthy with that, and we need to know that they can constantly come to us. So we're a representative of the community, um, and they need to trust us. And so having our, my cellphone I'm great with, because they need to be able to access me. Um, and that's why that, um, I'm a hundred percent open to whatever they need.
All right. Adam?
Not to beat the drum here, but, uh, excuse me. Transparency would be my number one thing. Uh, me and my wife run a business, so we've been in business for almost fifty years. I'm a third-generation owner. Um, we wouldn't be where we're at today without open and honesty and transparency. Um, we hold meetings, if not once, two or three times a month. Um, I open the meetings up for anyone to talk about whatever they want, and I also meet with all my employees individually. Um, I don't believe the sunshine law was created to keep the, uh, community in the dark, uh, about certain things that are going on. Um, I think it was, uh, you know, obviously they have closed-door sessions for hiring and firing and, um, those personal things without, uh, giving people's names out. Um, but I want, uh, I want it to be open, I want, um, I want the community to trust us. Um, you know, like, uh, Glenn said, uh, the board sets the, uh, agenda, and, uh, Dr. Jones, uh, fulfills that agenda of what the board votes on. Um, I want the board to be wide open. Um, so if someone has a question about what, uh, something that's on their mind, I want them to be able to come to a meeting, and I want them to be able to have the allotted time that they deserve, being a taxpayer in our community, um, to have that opportunity to voice their opinion. And I would like for there to be dialogue back and forth without just cutting us off at three minutes and then automatically moving on to the next situation. Um, I think it's disrespectful to our community and the patrons that pay the tax money, that, uh, pay for this school district. Um, and so being upfront and honest, giving my cellphone number out, um, letting anybody voice my opinion. I'm on emergency call twenty-four seven for my business, I'll be on call twenty-four seven for the children. Um, they're our future, um, they're our community. Um, and so that would be the main thing for me, voice and, uh, transparency, just like everybody else says.
All right, thank you. So Glenn, next question, we'll start with you.
Sir?
The General Assembly is considering a bill that would create an open enrollment system. It would allow students from outside the district to enroll, for instance, at Blair Oaks. If this measure were to pass, would use a board member's support or oppose Blair Oaks enrollment in this program?
So that's a great question.
Thank you.
And I have not seen all the full details in this, so I cannot give you a yes or no answer at the present situation. We have a lot of considerations to take into effect, uh, from a, uh, from a school board standpoint, when people are looking at coming in, do we have the facilities to be able to handle the new influx of people? Uh, do we have the money to be able to take care of these people? There's so many questions that have to be answered. First and foremost is our current constituents, the people that are in, within the district, and how do we maintain the level of excellence that we're, uh, that we're currently at and potentially moving, uh, higher up the chain? Um, so with those, with that level of consideration, I would have those, I guess, I would have to have quite a few questions answered before I could vote yes or no. I wanna make sure our district is taking care of the people who live within the district first, first and foremost, before we look at potentially entertaining the opportunity to bring mother, uh, bring other people into our district. There's a reason they choose to come within our district. We manage the district as best as we can with the resources that we have. If we start outstretching those resources to where we can't give same quality and level, uh, le- high level of exceptional experience to those individuals who are coming in, then it's going to affect everyone involved within the district. It stretches it out, our performance will start slipping and going down if we're, don't have the resources to be able to take care of the additional flow, so.
All right, thank you. Valerie, same question.
So the answer to your question would be a no, I would not support it. Um, I know that Blair Oak's School District is a highly sought-after district. We've lived through it. Um, we had a goal to move into the district. Um, it was a lot of work. It took several months of just finding a home for sale to move into. Um, so I know that we need to fully and a hundred percent take care of our twelve-hundred kids right now that we have enrolled in our school district. Um, we can't afford to open the district and have anybody come in. So, um, are we selective? Yes, but that's why we are so great, because the people that wanna be here, if needed, take the time, take the money, take the energy to sell their home, move into the district. So if somebody wants something bad enough, they're going to do what is necessary and possible to make that happen. So it can be done, we did it, so, um, it just depends on how bad you want it. Um, yes, it takes a lot of patience, but, um, I think our priority needs to be the twelve-hundred children that we are entrusted with right now. Um, so I'm excited to kinda see what that future looks like, but I know it's gonna be a, uh, sensitive subject, um, because I know a lot of people want to come here, uh, but if they want it, they can do it.
All right. Adam, same question.
I'm in the same boat as Valerie, uh, I'm a no. Um, my wife and I sacrificed a lot. Uh, we lived in a, uh, you know, two-bedroom duplex for three years so we could save up enough money to move to Blair Oaks. Um, there's also a lot of other things that Um, there's also a lot of other things that come along with it. Do we want our classroom sizes going from fifteen to thirty students? Um, if you have an open enrollment, how many are we going to be allowing to come out to Blair Oaks? So we're setting the number at twenty-five. Okay, well, the twenty-six person calls, Mr. Smith calls, says, hey, we'd like to come out. Well, sorry, we can't do that because we're only allowing twenty-five people to come out to our district. Uh, the taxes are also another issue. I don't know how that goes with open enrollment, um, uh, but I want our tax money to stay in Wardsville. I want the tax money that our uh, community is paying to go to Blair Oaks, which I know that will with open enrollment, but those folks are not spending their money in Wardsville neither. And so um, I'm a no. Um, I don't know a hundred percent of everything that's uh, involved with open enrollment. Um, but just based on those things, like Valerie said, we made a lot of sacrifices to be at Blair Oaks because we know um, Blair Oaks is the best. We want the best for our students. Um, we don't want to be busting at the seams with our buildings, putting up sixteen mobile homes out of there because of a thousand people wanted to move out to Wardsville to come to Blair Oaks. Um, so sacrifice, um, if anyone wants to come to Blair Oaks, little sacrifice goes a long way in the long run.
All right, John?
Totally against it. Uh, as a board, we're totally against it as far as all the Senate members that are currently sitting on the board. We've actually reached out to our uh, representatives at the Capitol in our district that we are opposed to it and we want them to vote no against it. Um, not all laws, but the majority of laws seem to be created that have to do with the masses, specifically metropolitan areas. And again, there's a culture out at Blair Oaks that uh, has taken quite some time to build and create. And uh, although, you know, I understand the reasoning behind uh, the law being presented, it's not a good fit for Blair Oaks. I don't see it ever being a good fit for Blair Oaks. Um, so I'm definitely opposed to it and we've uh, done our best to actually try to get that message across to the lawmakers as well.
All right. Um, next question, we'll start with Valerie. Blair Oaks has yet to finish phase two of the construction of the new high school and is set to place that phase on the ballot as a bond issue in twenty-twenty-three. Projects at other schools have been dropped and set back amid rising construction costs. As a board member, how would you weigh responsible use of tax dollars and time constraints against the desire to finish the high school?
Um, great question. Um, I know that when uh, Dr. Jones and the board decided to put that on the ballot, um, that there was a uh, great, great turnout, um, with a positive, um, a, a good, uh, solid stance on we support our children, we support this decision to build a new high school. Um, so I know that um, our community um, has a huge uh, support system of parents, which you know, are the taxpayers. And um, I know that whenever Dr. Jones and the board members say, you know, hey, we are in need of this money, they don't do it very often at all. Uh, they are very um, conservative in their spending, which is perfect. Um, but once that uh, needs to get on the ballot, I believe next year, there is going to be um, a full support of it because they know that this needs to happen. Um, I know that they're financially uh, conservative. Um, nobody knows kind of what the economy is going to be doing at that time, unfortunately, but they know that it's going to be a vital uh, step that's needed um, for the future as uh, we continue to grow. Um, so I think that the, the community will definitely support it.
All right. Adam, same question.
I totally agree with Valerie. Um, when they um, opened, uh, Jim, uh, Dr. Jones had the meetings for the um, the new high school, the gym was packed at every single one. Um, that's a great thing about Blair Oaks. Our uh, parents are involved every step of the way. We're not left in the dark about things when it comes to things like this. Um, but with rising costs, you know, there may be some things that we may not be able to do because we want to stay within a certain budget. Um, we don't want to spend an extra three million dollars uh, if it's not in the budget. When they built the middle school, um, they came uh, with a certain number of uh, the money that they had. Um, they wanted to do certain things. Well, the budget did not allow for that to happen, so they took it out. Um, some good things, great things that we've done with the new high school is that we've actually, you know, for the gym in phase two, we're going to be able to put another thousand, fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred seats. The structure's already there. And so we don't just think about today, we think about what's going to be going on in four, ten, fifteen years. And so I thought that was great in planning that. Um, when we built the high school, was at the perfect time. Um, with the cost that started skyrocketing, our high school was finished. And so, not finished, I mean, there's also always little things that happen, uh, you know, every single day over there, but um, with the new building. Um, so again, I think the community would be in full support. Um, if we were to have to have uh, you know, something come up where we need a little more money to finish the second phase of the high school, I don't think it would be an issue with the community whatsoever.
All right, John?
It's a great question. Um, the projection as far as for the phase two is four point eight million dollars and we were going to be able to have the capacity to present that as a bond issue based off of that uh, dollar amount. Um, my understanding is the big project that they're doing over at Jeff City that has to do with their big sports complex, that that's uh, been over budget by seven million dollars. So they've had to make several changes to uh, the completion of that project. Um, so it's going to have to be something that we're going to have to take a close look at to see what kind of a shortfall we're going to have based off of those original projections. Um, we do have contingencies that has to do within the district, that has to do with any future projects that may be on the horizon, be that um, maintenance replacing air conditioners. Uh, we've got it on the uh, long-term approach to possibly um, doing a AstroTurf or artificial uh, field uh, surface for the baseball field. Um, so there's money that we're already setting aside for those potential projects. So some of those dollars may have to be shifted to actually be able to complete the actual second phase of the high school. So I think we'll be very creative, you know, we have to stay within a uh, as far as our bond uh, capacity, we can't uh, you know, that, that's how we have to work within the realm of, of what we have the ability to work within. But I think we'll be creative in trying to finish it truly on this second phase and our hope is, is that we don't have to cut anything. As Adam said, we did a lot of uh, prep work that had to do uh, with the actual first phase, that had to do with these next steps. So I'm confident that we'll get there and be able to complete it, but we're going to have to be very creative as well, so.
All right. Glenn, same question.
Much to John's, what John has said here and Adam, we have a budget that we have to stay within, we only have a certain amount of bond capacity. Unfortunately, with inflation, the way that it's affecting our economy, the cost of goods, the cost of labor, everything seems to be increasing. So we, uh, like you said, we're either going to have to get very creative or we're going to have to look at what we're going to cut back to maintain, to stay within that budget. It's either that or we have to look at moving it back in another year, which I don't think anyone really wants to do because as you said, we don't know what the future's going to hold, but most likely prices are just going to continue to move up, up. And so the longer we wait on something like that, the less buying power that we have. Now, uh, if we were to wait, we do pay off a little bit of our debt each year, uh, with that, so that potentially frees up more money. My fear would be that that would be eaten up by the increase in cost of goods and everything. So I think probably the best solution is to look at getting creative with what we have to make that happen.
All right. Um, Adam, we'll start with this, this question with you. Some legislators have proposed school board members be elected in geographic zones or wards within a school district. So for instance, in the Blair Oaks district, there might be a Wardsville district, there might be a St. Thomas district, et cetera. The idea behind that is to whether it would improve representation on a school board. Do you believe that to be the case?
Yes and no. Um, I'd love for all of our uh, teachers to live in our community. Um, a lot of our teachers are from Jeff City. Their tax money goes to Jeff City Public Schools, it does not come to Blair Oaks. So yes, I would love for all of our teachers to live in Wardsville where their tax money, their personal property taxes that they're paying goes to the Blair Oaks School District. Um, but we also want the best teachers. So that kind of limits us, we're a small community, um, you know, uh, Wardsville, um, St. Thomas, Taos, um, there's only a certain number of people that you can gather, you know, to provide uh, education to our kids. So um, going outside of our bounds to find great teachers, I think is great. Um, again, we want the best, we want Blair Oaks to have the best uh, staff and administrators. Um, but I would love for all of our staff to, to live within the Wardsville School District, um, just based on, you know, their tax dollars and where their tax money is going.
Okay, John?
I'm not opposed to it. Um, if the question is based off of potential changes to uh, actually looking at Wardsville and maybe having two representatives on the board from Wardsville, two from St. Thomas, two from Taos, if that's what the voters want, uh, if that would give um, a better involvement within those communities where they feel like they're better represented uh, on the board, I wouldn't be opposed to it. Um, you know, all four of us are wanting to serve the district and so my hope would be that if they decide to go to that kind of a concept, that you would have people that really, really want to do what's in the best interest of the district, that is in the best interest of our students, um, and continue that type of approach. Um, you know, my only concern would be is if uh, there's an issue in one small community where they're actually wanting representation because they have some um, agenda that they're trying to put forth that actually isn't in the best interest of the district as a whole. Uh, I would hope that would not uh, play out in that manner, so. But if it ends up being this way, that, that the change happens and that's what the people of the community want, then I would be supportive of it, so.
All right. Glenn?
That's pretty much what John said there. I, if we, if, if that's in the best interest of our community where we break it, break it up into districts, I'm fine with that. If we want to continue to serve as a, from a district-wide basis, I'm fine with that too. It just depends on what our constituents want with that. I look to try to develop relationships throughout the district and try to understand what each area is kind of wanting and looking for from our school, uh, from our school district. Again, like John said, the only concern I would have with something like that is if you have a specific, specific area, uh, I wouldn't want it to promote extreme division within, with, uh, division within the group itself and derail the uh, opportunity for quality, quality educational experience for our kids.
Okay.
So.
Valerie?
Clarification, is this the uh, school board representatives or are you um, having diversity that?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's, uh, school board members would be elected in geographic areas.
Okay. So um, I believe that it's a noble goal um, to have, but I believe that it should not be um, the reason on why we hire or elect somebody. Um, just as somebody shouldn't be elected to represent the community based upon where they live, what their ethnicity is, their race, uh, their gender. Um, it should be, are they a great candidate to represent our community and take care of our children? Um, it should be, do you live here or do you live here? So um, it is noble, it's great. Um, it would be nice to have, you know, um, diversity everywhere, but um, whether it be hiring a, a teacher or a custodian, it shouldn't be based upon, you know, oh, you're, you fit our ethnicity requirement that we're looking for. It should be, are you the best? Are you going to do uh, your per, your job performance great and take care of our children? Hey, great, that should be its main focus. Um, that being said, yes, I'm going to hopefully be, um, if I am elected on the board, be only the second uh, female on the board. Um, there's only one other uh, lady on the board and um, I believe that that doesn't really represent our whole Blair Oaks community like it should. Um, are they the best candidates for the fit? Um, yes, um, but it would definitely be nice to have another female voice on it. Um, and then I think I would probably be the second youngest person on the board if elected to that position. Um, so it kind of gives a more, maybe of a young creative mind. Um, I would hope to give new ideas to the board. Um, but again, I shouldn't be voted onto the board just because I am a female. Um, it should be, I'm qualified, I will do the best job, just like the gentleman here. It should be, are you qualified to do the job and take care of the children? Then that should be its main purpose.
All right. Adam, I'll give you another run.
Yeah, sorry, I missed, I misheard the question. I thought you were talking about staff.
My explanation might not have been specific enough, so.
Sorry, Gary.
Take a, take a minute and kind of lay out your position there.
Can you, please, the question, please?
Some legislators have proposed school board members be elected in geographic zones or wards within a school district. Do you believe that would improve representation on the board?
No. Um, I mean, if people from Taos or from St. James or uh, St. James, St. Thomas want to run for school board, I mean, it's an open election. All you gotta do is go in and fill out the paperwork. Um, I don't know where Glenn lives, but.
St. Thomas.
Okay. So there we go. We have a St. Thomas representative here. Um, he has the same concerns that I believe that Valerie and John and I have, um, and he put his name in. This is a volunteer, you know, we're not getting paid to do this. And so a lot of people say they want to do a lot of things, um, but they don't ever take that next step to do it. Um, and so um, is it, is it diverse from Taos to Wardsville? Um, you know, maybe a little bit, but I mean, we're the same community, we all were, we all live in that same community, um, we all see each other all the time. Um, so no, I don't think, I don't think that we should be separating the districts based on the geol- geographics.
All right. Um, last question, we're going to start with John. Um, much has been made of the differences between equality in education and equity in education. Do you think distributing the same exact educational resources to each child is all it takes for a top child to succeed? Or is there a place for equity in education where children have access to resources that are designed to address their individual needs in order to better prepare them to succeed academically?
I'm going to speak uh, from a personal aspect. I have a child that's autistic and Jack has had to have an IP ever since he's been in the district as a kindergarten. So, and in the world that we're living in, we're seeing our numbers increase in that capacity where kids are coming into the district that have special needs. Um, so we have to invest um, from the aspect of providing tools, um, and the different resources to take care of every child. Um, it doesn't matter if they're a gifted child that um, you know, needs to be um, elevated to the aspect where they push their limits and their creativity, uh, or somebody that uh, is extremely handicapped in some way. We need to be able to find uh, resources and tools that can help them in whatever way that they need help to maximize their opportunities and be able to do things in life within those opportunities or capacities that they have. So both are important, the quality aspect of it, but then also being able to uh, have the resources to financially uh, supply uh, whatever is needed. Uh, and again, I know we have to stay within budgets, but I think uh, our society is looking at the capacity that has to do with special needs and so we're seeing more funding uh, that is available for school districts that has to do with that particular area. So um, both are important and I will always have the focus on making sure that no child uh, doesn't have the opportunity to succeed and get the tools that they need to be able to.
Glenn, you're next.
Now, I hate to ask, but would you please repeat the question for me?
Absolutely. Much has been made of the differences between equality in education and equity in education. Do you think distributing the same exact educational resources to each child is all it takes for all children to succeed? Or is there a place for equity in education where children have access to resources that are designed to address their individual needs in order to better prepare them to succeed academically?
Okay, thank you. So children absolutely are individuals. We each, or all of us require different things for us to be successful. Maybe something very silly as flashcards from, uh, from a physical memory standpoint, or as you said, aut- from the autistic spectrum. There's, no individual's going to be the same. So I think there absolutely is opportunity for us to work with each child within uh, the limits that we have set, uh, set to us. Uh, going through high school, or going, my school career, I had different teachers that were, uh, that would work with, from my standpoint. For me, to help me to be able to learn things that I may have fallen behind on, uh, fallen behind on, I struggled in English, so I had to have extra resources to uh, come in and help me to be able to get up to a level that other people naturally were at. While from a mathematical standpoint, I was far beyond many of the people that were around me. So it, uh, those people may have had either extra, uh, they would have taken either extra resources, extra time, or just a different learning style to be able to get those individuals up to that level, to have a ba- uh, to have the competence that they need to be able to move forward in life. I absolutely believe that every child's an individual and they do need the extra resources that we have available and through grants and other opportunities. that we have available and through grants and other opportunities given to us from different governments and different entities. I think there's, there are plenty of opportunity and plenty of money and plenty of resources to be able to pull from, to be able to reach out to bring all of those individuals up. With that being said, the focus is, we get, we take our children, we best prepare them as we can for that next step in life, whether that be to a college, a trade school, moving into a career, directly into a career. We want to know, help those kids to be able to facilitate that movement and have that transition as easy as possible so that they can move on with their life. And some of the ways is teaching them how to learn.
All right. Valerie, same question.
I'm going to take this, Gary, a little bit different, whereas I'm interpreting the question as another name for the critical race theory that's being taught, not in our school district, but as a potential. So every lesson should be age appropriate for the grade level that it is being taught. I know that we have enough confidence in our teachers that they are teaching the curriculum according to what the state lays out for them. I 100% wholeheartedly am against any CRT or teaching division among students, whether based upon, you know, the color of their skin or their ethnicity or their race. So there is a, there needs to be history taught, you know, the good, bad, ugly of our United States history, but there should never be division taught to our students based upon, you know, somebody's greater or somebody's lesser than a person based upon, you know, their ethnicity and race. So, and a little, I guess, side note to kind of what I believe as well, one of the things that I believe that we should be incorporating into our school district and make very vital resource to our students is I really believe that we need to do a better job on teaching mental health to our students and to have zero tolerance for bullying. I know that it's super easy for parents to say, oh, that's not necessary and let's figure our heads in the sand and say, you know, that's not relevant to our students today. But it is a increasing epidemic that our children are experiencing and going through. And I know in nearby communities, they never think that it would happen in their small community, but our children need that attention right now, especially in today's world. And we really need to give that attention.
All right.
Just thank you, Gary. Coming from personal experience, that's like John and Glenn and Valerie, when we moved to Wardsville, you know, our children were probably about two years behind when it came to math, writing, reading, science, you name it, they were behind. They didn't leave our children behind. Blair Oaks does not leave children behind, unlike other districts around our community Teachers, you know, they only work a certain number of hours during the week. Well, out of Boardsville, Blair Oaks, you know, teachers, the administration, the staff, go beyond. And so teachers would sit with my, my kids after school or we would go to a, to a place and they would learn there for free at no charge. And so my kids are now on the dean's list and so I equate that to the administration, to our teachers and to our community that is super involved in everything that we do. I do not believe that there should be going to CRT. I do not believe that we should be teaching somebody a certain way and teaching somebody else a certain way because of the color of their skin or whether they're male or female. But, you know, God made us all children. I don't believe Jesus will leave any child behind and I don't believe Blair Oaks would do that either. But yeah, we do have issues with, we had councilors updates probably about six months ago. Number one issue is depression and anxiety. We have a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot, but it's high on my list as to why these things are going on, what can we do to help these children and what can we do from a district standpoint to bring more funds in to help these children out?
All right, thank you. So let's go to our closing statements. We're going to start with Glenn.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate the time, I appreciate hearing everyone else's opinions here on the different subjects, appreciate the good questions that you asked. I am excited about the opportunity to potentially be able to be on the school board here. Like I said, my children are coming through, I have a vested interest for our children and all the other children in the district for at least the next 15 years. And just as a community member, I have a vested interest. I've been here for 18 years, I love the community that we've built and I want to continue to facilitate the excellent experience that we have here. From a conservative standpoint, I'm physically and socially conservative, I feel that, I don't know, some of the, some of the stuff on, we talked about anxiety and depression, I don't believe that the mask mandates are necessary within the schools because I think that facilitates some of the anxiety and depression. So I would, I don't know, I would vote for the, what I feel like is the best interest within the district for every, for everyone. I hope you guys choose me to represent you because I feel like I would do a fantastic job and you guys have supported me so much with the business and just being here in the district. I love you all and I thank you.
All right. Valerie?
First of all, thank you News Tribune and E3 to host us. I was definitely looking forward to this time just to be open to the community members to, so they can know more about us. And for the gentlemen taking their time to do this journey together, it's definitely been an experience. I'm definitely ready to get ready to work. I'm ready to serve. I think throughout my whole career choices, as a nurse, the empathy and compassion and the trust level is extremely important and strong to me. And I believe that the priority on the children is a utmost importance and being involved with them and including the community with the school board meetings, there's definitely a need, there's definitely a trust that's needed among the community. They are 100% invested, you know, with the most important things in their lives, their children. And I know me as a mom would do anything for our, our children, just like these dads here as well. But am I grateful that to be a part of the Blair Oaks community? Definitely. I'm so happy that we made the move to Green. We're been involved ever since day one, been involved in like PTO ever since Max was in kindergarten. So just kind of transitioning that and continuing my involvement in representing the community as a whole person, from, you know, first in the morning to late at night, the community knows that they can trust me and rely on me to make the kids the best they absolutely can be. So I would appreciate their votes. I know any of these candidates will be a great fit because I know that we have the kids as a priority right now.
Thank you. Adam?
Thank you, Gary, and thank you ladies and gentlemen, Valerie. It's been fun. I didn't know what to expect, I was pretty nervous walking in here. This is the first time I've done anything like this. I'm a, I'm a small business owner, politics is not my thing, I'm not a politician. My heart is with the children. That's why I started going to the meetings last August. I was polled, I felt like I was polled to insert myself and to kind of see what was going on at Blair Oaks. I believe we are the best, I believe we have the best students, I believe we have the best teachers and administration. I want to continue the excellence, just like we all have spoken about. And all these questions you've asked us, I mean, we're pretty much on the same page, I believe, you know, 95 to 100% of the time as what we want as far as Blair Oaks goes. I put faith first, I do a lot of prayer before I make any rational decisions, but I will stand firm on what I believe in and those, I will not budge on those. I love Wardsville, I love Blair Oaks and I ask the community to please vote me in and I would, if I don't get voted in, I will still be showing up at the meetings, it doesn't matter to me. I will be there to see kind of what's going on with the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you. John?
Again, I want to thank News Tribune for doing this. I really appreciate you all's opportunity to have this platform and be able to communicate. I hope you, I hope we get like a million views and that would be awesome. So, and I also want to again say thank you all for wanting to run as well. It's been an honor for me to be on the board the last 12 years. I want to continue to be on the board if the patrons of the district so choose to vote for me. But I will tell everybody that hopefully that reads the article or watches this, that please get out and vote. You know, it's, it's our honor to be US citizens and have the ability to vote and a lot of people can have their opinions, but unless you're going to actually get out and vote, all it is is an opinion. You need to actually be involved where you're actually entrusting people to represent you, in this case for the school board. So please get out and vote. I would appreciate your support, but if you decide not to continue to have me be on the board, I know the other three will be great representation to the district and do a phenomenal job. So again, I appreciate you all allowing us to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, on behalf of the News Tribune, I'd like to thank the candidates for participating in the forum. In addition to stories about this forum in tomorrow's News Tribune, we'll have a variety of other means by which you can become more informed about these races. We will be asking candidates questions we didn't get to today and those answers will appear in an upcoming issue of the News Tribune. You can still submit questions for candidates by sending us an email at vote@newstrubune.com.